Good evening. I'd like to call the Licensing Board for February 17th, 2020 to order. Please rise for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the heart of the Constitution of Justice.
We have four items on the agenda tonight. Item number one, the regular meeting minutes of February 3rd, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed by the same sign, motion carries. Item number two, massage establishment license for within arms' reach LLC, within arms' reach 1784 Barton Avenue, number 12.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed by the same sign, motion carries. Item number three, massage establishment license for Blue Luna LLC, Blue Luna 1525, I'm sorry, 525 Hickory Street.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed by the same sign, motion carries. Item number four is the operators licenses, and the list is in our packet.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed by the same sign, motion carries. Being no further business before the Licensing Board, I adjourn. I'd like to call the Common Council meeting to order tonight, a little out of order, but we're going to call it to order right now, for February 17th, 2020. And note that we have 30 items on the agenda. Item number one is appointment of candidate to fill the district office of District 8 Alder Person. Earlier this evening, we held interviews with four candidates for the open spot left by Alderman Kissed when he resigned unexpectedly. Hopefully Roger's doing well. We all wish him well, and sorry to see him go, but sometimes you've got to take care of yourself first, and that's what Roger's doing, so Roger, get well. We had four candidates, four very good candidates that came in and we talked tonight. We've all kind of got an idea of where they stand, the items that they're going to bring to the table. Like I said, they're four very, very, very good candidates, and it's going to be a hard choice, no matter who we choose. What we're going to be doing is we're going to be doing a ballot-type vote. Like I said, with the four candidates, we're going to, each vote, I will be voting as an alderman tonight, and not as the mayor, so we will have seven people voting, which is going to work out good, give us an odd number. Hopefully, or the way it's going to work, is the first round of balloting, if one of the four candidates gets four votes, that will be the person that will be chosen for the position. If we would have, say, a tie, we'd have a 3-3-1 and 0. The two people tied at 3 would then be voted on again, we'd have a second vote, and again, the person that came up with four votes would win. If, by some strange coincidence, we have a three-way tie, we could have a 2-2-2-1, we would just basically have to keep voting until we come up with four, so you're going to need four to win. So with that being said, unless anybody has any questions?
If, in a 3-3-3-1, would we be voting again for all four candidates, or will we be eliminating the 1?
We'd be eliminating the 1 and the 0.
Thank you.
We'd only be eliminating, I'm voting on the top two, I'm sorry, I didn't say that. Thanks for catching that. So the four candidates that we have are Aaron Zingzine, Alice M. Iaquinta, Clifford VanBeek, and Megan Kennedy. So we're going to ask the aldermen to vote for one person, initial next to your name, and then give them to Stephanie, and she'll let us know what the results are. Okay. Thank you, Alderman, for your votes. Like I said, this has been a very tough decision. All four candidates brought some outstanding things to the table, and again, if you didn't get selected, please do not take any offense to it, continue to get involved in the city of West Bend, because like I said, you all had some fantastic ideas. That being said, with six votes, Megan Kennedy. So Megan, if you want to come up here and be sworn in.
Raise your right hand. Aye, Megan Kennedy.
Aye, Megan Kennedy.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the office of.
To the office of.
Alder Person, District 8.
Alder Person, District 8.
But have not yet entered upon duties.
But have not yet entered upon duties.
Therefore swear.
Therefore swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
Will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Megan, not so quick, come on up. You start tonight. You wanted it, you're going to work.
You wanted the job, man, you got it.
She got the squeaky chair, right?
I can give her a. She's going to give you a.
Oh, an iPad thing?
Yeah. That'll have all that stuff on it.
Are we going to Board of Public Works now? Are we going to council?
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a resolution honoring Craig K. Sedanico. And I will read the resolution. Whereas Craig K. Sedanico was elected to his first term as mayor in April 2011, faithfully serving the city of West Bend for three consecutive terms, and whereas during his tenure, the city of West Bend has achieved significant economic growth and improved overall financial stability. And whereas Craig K. Sedanico exemplified outstanding leadership as mayor, devoting a substantial portion of his time to the betterment and enrichment of the citizens of West Bend, now therefore be it resolved, the Common Council of the City of West Bend, Washington County, Wisconsin honors Craig K. Sedanico and expresses its deep appreciation for his dedication of service to the city of West Bend. And hopefully it will be passed and approved 17th of February, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed by the same sign, motion carries. I know you're, there you are. Mayor, would you like to step up and say something?
You know, I'm a person of few words, I don't like the limelight too much. But thank you, thanks for the Common Council, thanks to city staff, very unnecessary but very much appreciated recognition, congratulations, new alderwoman, very exciting stuff. Thanks also to, of course, the citizens of West Bend for electing me for the better part of a decade. Took the position seriously, as do all of you. I know that we all, all work hard for the betterment of West Bend. When I was elected in 2011, my hope was to be part of a team that could leave it better than we found it, and I think by most any measure, that's true. Thanks to, again, many, many people in this room, other staff members and council members that may no longer be serving their capacities, but many, many people contributed to the positive momentum that I think is really undeniable in West Bend right now. The feeling of strength, the feeling of power, the feeling of quality that exists in West Bend is pretty remarkable, so keep up the good work. Thank you once again, and I'll see you all around town. Have a good night.
Don't run away yet. Is somebody else that would like to offer congratulations to you? I think he's hiding back there, there he is. Former alderman Ed DuKane, please come on up.
Thank you, Steve. I'm not sure, are you able to pull that back up?
It was from in there, we didn't do it.
Not me, please, not me. Thanks again, Steve. For the past month or two, I've been working with city staff to find a way to honor your service to the community through private donations. We were able to fund this engraved stone that will be placed in downtown West Bend as soon as the frost is out of the ground, but a little, another, oh, here you've got the spot. Just another way to say thanks, and for those community members to not forget the hard work that you did.
Thank you.
Yep, you bet. Thanks, gang.
Any parting words?
Pardon me?
Any parting words?
Keep working hard, and you too can earn a rack. Thanks, guys, very much appreciated. See you soon.
Thanks, Mayor. With that, I will reset the Common Council agenda.
All right, thank you, Steve. I would like to call to order the Board of Public Works. We have 12 items on tonight's agenda. The first is the minutes from the January 20th meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion or changes? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose, motion carries. Item number two is the awarding contract for 20-05 Tree Surety, with a presentation by Cindy Lines.
Good evening. This year, we got four bids for the Tree Surety project. The low bid was Dan Larson Landscaping, who you know has done our projects for the last three years. The low bid was $39,295. We have another alternate bid of $20 for digging, hand-digging holes if they need it, and $800 per watering, extra watering cycles. They water for 12 weeks after the trees are planted, as a part of the contract, but if it's a really dry summer and we need additional watering, we can award that extra watering cycle. So we usually hold an extra $800 in order to award for hand-digging holes, and if we need the full 14 cycles of watering, that would be another $11,200. So with a 3% contingency, the bid, or the award would be $52,833.85. We don't award the hand-digging holes and watering unless we need them, so, and all the years I've done this, we've never awarded the extra watering, so hopefully we'll have enough rain this summer. But we're going to award to Dan Larson, he's been a good contractor for us the last few years, so.
All right, thank you, Cindy. Any questions for Cindy?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose, motion carries. Thank you, Cindy. Item number three is permission to bid Contract 20-07 Regner Park Shelter Construction Project. Cindy?
Me again. We are ready to bid out the Kiwanis-sponsored shelter. It's a hexagonal shelter for Regner Park on the west side of the fishing pond. It's proposed to be an open shelter and with, you know, just legs and a roof, and they want to clad the legs with stone like the other structures in Regner Park are, and we've got a cost estimate of $67,000, which includes the shelter, which we've already purchased, for $20,725, and we have a cost from We Energies to run electric to the other side of the parking lot, so that we can put electric into the shelter, excuse me, that cost was $3,830.80. The other costs that go into this would be the putting electric in the shelter and cladding those post bases. Right now, we're asking permission to bid for construction of the shelter, the concrete floor and the roofing, and then putting up the prefabricated shelter that we bought already, and the estimate for that is about $31,000 that we'd like to bid out.
All right, thank you, Cindy. Any questions?
Chris? I was going to mention that I'm going to abstain, as I am president of Early Risers Kiwanis, and I played a piece in this. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I understand, so Kiwanis, is covering that cost?
We have, okay, $20,000 is in the Friends Group from donations to the Regner Rejuvenation Group, which is held in the Friends Group account. Then we have another $20,000 from the Early Risers, and then they're going to contribute another $12,725 to cover the cost of the shelter, plus the Park PARC Fund, we're going to go up to another $15,000 to pay for the shelter. Of course, these are all estimates, we're not quite sure what the bids are going to come in yet, but that's where we've got.
So then does the city covers it in the short term, and that gets moved over in the long term?
Well, some of it will be coming out of the PARC funds, which are the Park Department funds.
Okay.
So that's that part of city funds.
Gotcha, all right.
I think you should explain, Mike, the park funds and the accounting for that, please.
Sure. So, and good evening. So ultimately, the entire project's funded by donations. The Early Risers, Kiwanis is funding about approximately 2/3 of the project, and the PARC account that Cindy is referencing, it's a park fund, but all those funds that are under are donations from different individuals and groups and things like that throughout the years for different projects, or just general donations, so ultimately, no tax dollars are going into the construction of the project. Cindy's looking at permission to bid for $31,000 tonight, to get the shelter up, the concrete work done, and then she'll hire another contractor or two for electrical work, things like that, so.
I just wanted to make sure that was clear, in case anyone was concerned.
Yep, awesome partnership, again, with the Early Risers.
Great.
All right, anyone else?
Thank you, Kiwanis.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose, motion carries. Thank you, Cindy. Item number four, Award Contract 1-2020 Air Stripper Reservoir Roof Coating, the presentation by Travis Toll. Travis?
Good evening. In, in the 80s, the water from three municipal groundwater wells went to, needed VOC removal. So back in 1989, the DNR required us to build a VOC removal plant. With that, the building is located on North Main Street, just north of Park Avenue, on the east side of the road. You'll see the two towers, those are two VOC removal towers. The three municipal wells pump into the air stripper, the water flows up the two VOC towers, which removes all VOCs from the water, and finally is stored in 120,000-gallon concrete reservoir at the plant till demand of water, in which booster pumps will deliver into water distribution system. The reservoir must be inspected every five years, per WDNR requirements, with the last inspection performed last year in 2019. In 2014, the inspection concluded the roof coating was starting to show signs of deterioration, and this can lead to potential infiltration of rainwater or contaminants, and according to DNR specs and regulations, according as needed for replacement. The only solution DNR would allow at that time in 2014 was a rubber membrane over the concrete reservoir. We were advised by Strand Associates, our engineering firm, the consultant for our engineering firm, that due to inspections on our reservoir, that we should hold off on the roof coating until a new roll-on polyurethane product that manufacturers were introducing to DNR receives approval. Early last year, the DNR approved the polyurethane material and the application process. With the recommendation from Strand Associates, previous inspections, and all approvals finalized from the DNR, we are addressing the roof coating at this time. Bids were opened on February 6th with two bids received. Totals were summarized in the packets, and based on, and based on the bids, along with Strand Associates working with the contractor on previous projects, we would like to recommend proceeding with the awarding to the lowest bidder of a lump sum bid base price, bid of $26,700, and the bid alternative number one of $12,000 for a total of $38,700, to Badger Specialty Coating and Construction. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose, motion carries. Thanks, Travis. Item number five, Award Contract 20-01 Bittersweet Drive, Green Valley Place, and Edward Court Reconstruction, presentation by Max Marshall. Max?
Good evening, thank you. This item is to award Contract 2001, which is reconstruction of the streets that you enumerated. We receive bids on Monday, January 27th. We receive seven bids, which are listed on your memo, and the work under the contract will include replacing water main, replacing sanitary sewer, and also storm sewer pipes and manholes, and we construct the road pavement and curb and gutter and some sidewalk. We've reviewed the qualifications of the low bidder, Dorner Inc., and based on previous work done in the city, we find them capable of performing the work described by our contract documents. Therefore, we recommend that the board award the contract in the amount of $1,431,257.87 to Dorner Inc. at the unit prices specified in their bid for work actually performed, as well as contingency of approximately 5.6% for an allocation not to exceed $1.512 million for the construction of this project. Previously budgeted funds from PMP Sewer and Water would be used for this project.
Thank you, Max. Anybody have any questions? John?
Yeah, Max, because of the problem we had last year on 8th Avenue, do they have a deadline to get those projects complete, and if they don't, do you get reimbursed for anything over and above?
Yes, thank you for this question, actually. All of our contracts feature deadlines for completion of the work, and in the case of 8th Avenue that we had last year, then we have a procedure to apply liquidated damages, and to have the contractor also pay for additional inspection cost, because we hire a consultant to do the inspection on the, on the job. So for every day after the completion, the final completion date, the contractor is responsible for the inspection cost. And we take some measures, like for the 8th Avenue project, we had to adjust the restoration where we went from just seeding and mulching to actually put down erosion matting, in order to avoid erosion in the spring when the snow melts, and the extra cost was covered by the contractor. The pavement marking that they put down were put down under bad conditions, it was, the temperature was too low, we know that, those pavement markings will come out next year, and will be reapplied in proper conditions at the contractor's cost. So we do have procedures, if it happens, to go beyond the deadline, and we're making sure that the city doesn't incur the cost from this negative impact.
Okay, thanks, Max.
Anyone else have any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose, motion carries. Item number six, Award Contract 20-02 School Place Sanitary and Storm Sewer Replacement.
Thank you again. This is another award for a contract to reconstruct School Place. Historically, we've had a lot of trouble with the existing storms, where our Department of Public Works has been patching it over the years, and now it's time to reconstruct the road. So we received the bids on Monday, January 27th, and we received seven bids, which are listed on your memo, and the work would include replacing sanitary sewer, replacing storm sewer. We will install under drain line behind the curb to help if properties along the road have drainage, could connect directly to the under drain line, and then, of course, rehabilitation of the roadway. The low bidder again is Dorner Inc., and we would recommend that the board award the contract to Dorner for the amount of $652,654.50 at the unit prices specified in their bid, and we would also recommend a contingency fund of approximately 5.6% for a total location not to exceed $689,000 for the construction of this project. Previously funded, budgeted funds in the PMP account and in the sewer utility account would be used for the construction of this project.
Thanks, Max. Any questions?
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Barton's very happy to see this happening, thank you.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose, motion carries. Item number seven, Award Contract 20-03 Paradise Drive and Aerial Drive Pulverize and Overlay.
Thank you again. This is a contract that we bid last year. Unfortunately, we bid it a little later in the year, and the cost, the bid that we received came up much higher than the anticipated cost estimate, and at that time, we had asked the board and council to reject the bids and allow us to rebid earlier in the year, which is what we did. And we received two bids on Monday, January 27th, and they are listed in, in your memo, so you have the cost for Paradise Drive, the cost for Aerial Drive, and the total cost. There is also the comparison with the bids that we received last year, and you can see that with rebidding this year, on the overall cost, that's a saving of $72,000 approximately. So the work under this contract will include pulverizing the existing asphalt, both on Paradise Drive and Aerial Drive. We would address any soft spots in the road by bridging with a break run and fabric as necessary. We would reshape the shoulders, and then obviously replace with the pavement, five inches of asphalt on Paradise Drive and four inches on, on Aerial. We reviewed the bids, and we reviewed the qualification of Stock Pavement Corp., which is the low bidder. is the low bidder. And based on previous work done in the city, we find them capable of performing this work. Therefore, we would recommend that the board award the contract in the amount of $253,735.75 to Stock Pavement Corp. for work actually performed. We would recommend also a contingency of approximately 5.6% for a total allocation not to exceed $268,000 for the construction of this project. The funds for this project would be coming from previously budgeted funds, PMP funds and airport funds.
Thank you, Max. Anybody have any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose. Motion carries. Item number eight, permission to advertise C-20-08, repaint epoxy pavement markings on River Road.
Thank you again. So now that we have some of our main contracts that came through, now we're looking at using some of the money left over in the budget for the pavement maintenance. And the first two that we're looking at are for pavement markings. So this first one, contract 2008, is to redo the pavement markings on River Road between Washington Street and just north of the roundabout at County NN. So this is the road that the city just got jurisdiction of from the county. On this road, we would use epoxy pavement marking. We usually use two different types of pavement markings, either the latex, which is a water based paint, or the epoxy. And then on a road like River Road that has higher traffic, we use the epoxy because it would last longer. And then we don't want to come back as often with the higher traffic roads. So the estimated project cost is approximately $102,000, and we would use budgeted capital project funds to cover the cost of this project. Assuming positive action by the board and council, we gave you the timetable for the project as we see it today, and we would advertise for bids, and we expect construction between May and September, basically applying the pavement markings.
All right. Thank you, Max. Any questions for Max?
Yeah, Max, is that epoxy is more expensive than latex, I take it?
Yes, it is more expensive.
And that's why we don't use it all the time?
That's why we use it on the main roads like Paradise Drive, Main Street, River Road, 18th Avenue. It's because it's more expensive, but then you don't have to come back as often. And that's given consideration to the amount of traffic that we would have to disturb every time you apply pavement markings or you install pavement markings.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose. Motion carries. Item number nine, permission to advertise C-20-09, repaint latex pavement markings at various locations.
Thank you again. So this contract would allow us to repaint latex pavement markings on other streets like residential streets or other streets with lower traffic volumes. We would like to advertise to receive bids for this work, and I already explained the difference between latex and epoxy. And the estimated project cost is $80,000. We will work with our Department of Public Works because they have done some of the pavement markings, and we're going to coordinate with them to see if they're going to do some this year, and then we will address the streets that they would not be able to address in-house with this contract.
Thank you, Max. Any questions?
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose. Motion carries. Item number 10, permission to advertise C-20-04, Sidewalk Removal Repair or Installation at Various Locations.
Thank you again. So this is the contract that we advertise for annually for our sidewalk program in order to address needed repairs throughout the city for sidewalk. And we have this sidewalk program where we do some repairs under this contract. We also allow property owners to do repairs on their own, and we have a reimbursement program for half of the cost. The annual budget for the sidewalk program is $100,000. So as in the past, we use this budget to fund this contract and also fund the reimbursement of sidewalks that are replaced under permit. So we're asking for permission to advertise for this contract, and the timetable is on the memo. It's pretty much the same as the other contracts where we expect construction between May and September of this year.
Thanks, Max. Any questions?
Max, the ADA ramps that you may be putting in certain locations in conjunction with this, are there people that have requested ADA ramps that need to be addressed, or is there a process for that?
Yes. We keep a database of information from sidewalk repairs, but also ADA ramp requests, and we address those ADA ramps in the sidewalk contract. So whenever we have an area where we replace sidewalk, we also inspect the ramps to see if they need to be brought to standard or they are damaged, they need to be replaced, they need to be adjusted, things like that. Other requests that we receive separately are also in the database and will be included in the contract for upgrade or replacement, et cetera.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Rich?
Max, I was going to call you today. I forgot to. I apologize for that. But how many times do we see citizens using the replace the sidewalks under permit and us doing half the? Is that number dwindling, or is that staying steady?
I don't have the numbers with me, but I would guess that it's pretty much the same every year. I believe out of this $100,000, we usually shoot for $80,000, $85,000 for the contract and the rest for replacement, and it's been that way for a few years. So every year, I would say it's probably about the same number.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose. Motion carries. Item number 11, Order for Removal and Replacement of Sidewalks Under Contract 20-01, Bittersweet Drive, Green Valley Place, and Edward Court Reconstruction.
Thank you again. This item is to ask for the board and council to issue an order to replace defective sidewalk that we found along the area of work under contract 2001. So basically, the process is that once we inspect the road, we inspect as well the sidewalk that would need to be repaired and replaced. We would replace it under the contract, repair it under the contract, and under the sidewalk program, we would charge the property owners for half the cost of this sidewalk replacement. And in order to do that, the first step is for the board and council to issue the order for the sidewalk repairs in that area, those specific slabs of sidewalk that we found in front of the properties listed in the attachment.
All right. Thank you, Max. Any questions for Max?
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose. Motion carries. Item number 12, Order for Removal and Replacement of Sidewalk Under Contract 20-02, School Place Sanitary and Storm Sewer Replacement.
Thank you again. So this order is similar to the one you just approved for contract 2001, and this order is for contract 2002 for School Place, and we're asking that the board and council issue the order.
All right. Thank you, Max. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose. Motion carries. Thank you, Max.
Thank you.
And with that being said, I adjourn the Board of Public Works.
Thanks, Andrew. I'd like to call the February 17th Finance Committee to order. We have only five items on the agenda. Item number one is the minutes of February 3rd, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries. Item number two is to award a quote Q-20-01, Construction Management and Inspection Services, Bittersweet Drive, Green Valley Place, and Edward Court Reconstruction, and quote Q-20-02, Construction Management and Inspection Services for School Place Sanitary and Storm Sewer Replacement. Again, presentation by City Engineer Max Marisol. Good evening, Max.
Good evening. Thank you again. So since now we're going to rebuild these roads under contract 2001 and 2002, we issued requests for proposals from consultants to do inspection services and construction-related services, contract administration, under those two contracts. This is following the city's purchasing policy. We published a request for proposals, and we reviewed the proposals we received from the consultants. You have the list of consultants and the bid prices that we received from each of them for both proposals. We score them based on the criteria that we always do, the completeness of the proposal, reliability of the firm, their experience, and the way they approach the project, and also the cost. The consultant that best met the requirements for both contracts, for both RFPs, is Concor Engineering. And for the first contract, their total amount is $63,980. And for the second, their cost is $41,992. Those are not-to-exceed prices to administer and inspect those projects. So we recommend both of these to be awarded to Concor Engineering.
Thanks, Max. Any comments or questions for Max?
Max, you mentioned on the earlier discussion on overruns for some of the projects like 8th Avenue. When the contractor goes over, there's additional inspection services that are required on a not-to-exceed price. Are those billed directly to the contractor that's?
See, the process, yeah, the process that we use, let's say that drop dead date on the contract is October 10. So all the costs up to October 10 fall within this cost, and it's our not-to-exceed amount. So if it's $60,000, the cost, and then we get billed $58,000, then we'll pay 58. If we get billed 63, we still just pay the 60 because it's a not-to-exceed. After October 10, every inspection cost is given to me prior to me making the next payment to the contractor. So the contractor submit their payment, and I subtract whatever inspection cost it is from there. If it's $5,000, $14,000, whatever, I subtract it from the payment to the contractor in order to take that money and pay the consultant who's done the inspection.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments for Max?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries. Thanks, Max.
Thank you.
I think you're done. Item number three is a resolution authorizing the correction of taxes. Presentation by City Assessor Jeff Yoder. Good evening, Jeff.
Good evening. The resolution that I am asking you to approve is regarding a double assessment that occurred in 2019. Our office identified that the personal property account for Valvoline Instant Oil Change was also assessed as VIOC Franchising Incorporated. Our recommendation is to rescind the 29 tax bill for VIOC. The 2019 tax bill for Valvoline Instant Oil Change has been paid.
Excellent. Thanks, Jeff. Any comments for Jeff, for questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. No further comments or questions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries. Thanks, Jeff. Item number four is a resolution for Transportation Alternative Program TAP Grant Application. And this will be a presentation by Project Manager Cindy Linds. Good evening, Cindy.
Hello. So we applied for the Transportation Alternatives Program grant, which is a DOT grant. It was due January 24th, but they also require a resolution to be sent in before the middle of April. So I'm coming here to get that resolution. This is for Phase Three, which we're calling Phase Three of the Riverwalk West Program. Phase One would be relocating utilities, which we're proposing would happen this year. Phase Two is construction of everything south of the North Pedestrian Bridge. And Phase Three is everything north of the North Pedestrian Bridge. The reason we're asking for this grant for the Phase Three is because these funds won't be available from the DOT until July of 2022. So Phase One is this summer, 2020. Phase Two is stuff south of the North Pedestrian Bridge, which is proposed to be done in 2021, and this would be 2022. So we've asked for a little over $1.6 million for that Phase Three, and that is an 80/20 grant. So the city would have to kick in another $400,000 plus to match that grant of $1.6 million for a total project of right around $2 million.
Thanks, Cindy. So this would include the underpass that's been discussed? Is that?
Excuse me? What was that?
This would include the underpass that's being, that's been discussed?
Yes. This is like the fishing pier, those terrorist areas, the underpass, all of the parking areas up on the north end, all of, everything north of the North Pedestrian Bridge, correct?
Okay. Great. Thanks. Any comments or questions for Cindy?
Yeah, this resolution by itself doesn't put us on the hook for that 20% or whatever.
No, and we're in competition with a lot of other grant applications for these projects. So we'd be lucky to get it. We can withdraw our application if we decide we don't want it. But there is quite a long time span that you can finish the project. If you don't, if our timeline doesn't line up the way we're talking about, you still have extra time after 2022 to finish this project. So we don't have to do it in 2022.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cindy. Item number five is a resolution declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures from proceeds of borrowing. I think Jay, you're going to take this one?
Yeah, this is, as part of creation of TIF 14, we did expend some funds in advance of the borrowing or the actual TIF creation. We are allowed to have those funds reimbursed. So this $57,816 that's before you today would be reimbursed to the engineering department for funds that they had to incur design and engineering in advance of the TIF creation.
Thanks, Jay. Any comments or questions for Jay?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Being no further comments or questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries. And being no further business before the Finance Committee, I adjourn.
Thank you, Rich. I'd like to call the common council back into session. Item number four was supposed to be a presentation by the aquatic biologist regarding the vegetation at the Barton Dam, and Justice asked? at the Barton Dam. And Justice asked if he could make a few comments on that.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I think most people know that there's an issue developing up in Barton behind the dam. The silt has built up to a point where there's vegetation starting to grow. And we've been looking into the issue over the last year or two. We've had this aquatic biologist go in and take some samples and some depth measurements, breadth measurements, all kinds of measurements. And there's a, there's a number of fixes, most of which are really expensive. But there is one that's kind of, seems like a reasonable option, might take a little creative engineering, but will be relatively inexpensive and may be, be an ongoing solve. But it might be a little on the experimental side, too. So, there's a little bit of risk involved, but the reward would be great considering the amount of money that we'd save and fix the problem. So, I guess what I'm asking tonight is, do we wanna, this is gonna take some preparation for this guy to come down and, and give us a presentation. Do we wanna see this? Is there interest in fixing this problem? Do we think it's a problem? And that is a question.
Are there any, oh.
Go ahead, Mark.
Are there any issues currently? Or is this something we're concerned about because it's going to be an issue?
Yeah.
In other words, is the dam still fulfilling its purpose?
Yeah.
If we don't desilt it, what, what is the ramification for not doing something?
It's, it's getting more and more difficult to fish. It's getting more and more difficult to canoe. In fact, I don't think you can do either of the latter. And yeah, it's kind of a little bit of a preemptive action. So, yes and yes.
Would, would that come out of Parks and Rec or general fund? Where, where would, where would those funds come from?
The, the Public Works Department's been responsible for the dam and the maintenance of the dam and monitoring the gates, that kind of stuff. So, they, they have been expending any funds that we have needed. Although they've been minimal, we haven't had any significant dredging project.
And, yeah, Doug's been comfortable handling what's been done so far. There was, before I got there, Adam Wilkett was the previous alderman, and he took some action. And the action that he took is no longer gonna work. It's just gotten to be too much of an issue. And the amount that we're looking at spending on this experimental situation is just a little bit more than Doug was comfortable authorizing on his own, out of his own budget. So, it, we're just, that's why I'm looking for is authorization from you guys. But I also want you to understand what we're authorizing before that.
So, are you looking for a motion to invite a speaker to give us information?
I don't know that it requires a motion. I'm just looking for some consensus on whether or not we think it's a problem, and if so, a cheap way to fix it.
I, I don't have any problem learning, learning more about the possible problem.
Okay. I didn't think so, but I just wanted to check with people.
I, prior to when Adam was up there, I checked with the Public Works Director, I mean, yeah, before Rick Heister from Camel Sport, and I asked him about the situation. And his concern was that if that vegetation gets to a point where it gets so severe, the dam, there's a possibility of the water backing up and that pressure on the dam, because it's an old dam, there is a chance of that possibly washing that dam out. And that's why they've been monitoring it, trying to control it. But, I mean, it seems like every year, it just keeps coming back.
Yeah, I, I do feel like if we don't do something, we're gonna have a serious dam problem.
Right. I would, personally, I would like to see him give us some other alternatives. If we can slow the vegetation growth down, or whatever we can, at a minimal cost. I mean, the way it's going right now, it's dangerous. When I saw Public Works the last time out there trying to pull it out on a raft and then pulling it off to the side.
Yeah. And, and yeah, what we're talking about is gonna be, well, a separate company taking care of it, for one thing. And, and relatively inexpensive. We're not gonna have to lower the water level, which is gonna become a problem with mill and blah, blah, blah. So.
Right, right.
Seems like a reasonable thing. Thank you, John.
Justice, is this guy a member, does he own this company, or is he a representative of the company?
Yeah, no, Bob Lanyard, he owns Aquatic Biologists and would be happy to come down and talk to us about it.
Okay. And I know we can't hold anybody to any number, but just ballpark, what number is he throwing at you?
For the fix?
To do it, yeah.
It's like in the $6,000 range.
Okay.
Versus, I think the cheapest, the cheapest of the remaining five options is like a half a million dollars. So, it's, it's a huge jump.
Why not give credit to Doug for kicking it back to us, you know, that he's not just throwing such things out the window?
Yeah, no, I, I totally, totally understood him wanting to do that.
Appreciate that, too.
Am I, am I characterizing that right, Doug?
Sure.
That was my understatement. You just didn't feel comfortable authorizing that kind of spending.
Well, I wasn't prepared to present, present tonight, but I can cover a couple of things. One of the options was dredging, which was estimated over a million dollars. Another option was spraying the weeds, and that's very difficult in the water flow issue there. So, this gentleman came up with this other idea of curtains and trying to move sediment around. As long as the DNR's okay with it, I'm okay with it. It's, the last time I spoke to him, that was one question that we didn't have answered yet. So, I know Justice has been talking with him.
Yeah, yeah. And he, he did check with them, and the DNR, when he checked with them, said that on an experimental basis, yes. So, I assume that means if it works and doesn't cause any problems, they would continue to allow us to do that. But, you know, there, there's some question marks in it, no doubt.
I guess some of the reason we, it was kind of kicked back to council was budget, budget reasons. Our budget can't handle a hit like that. So, that's why we wanted to bring it back to council to kind of get their appetite on what, if they think there's an issue there or that we need to address.
No, that's great. I appreciate you doing that.
Okay.
Thank you, Doug.
So, it seems like there's a general consensus that we want to at least hear something from the gentleman, so.
Hear Mark? Yeah?
Yeah. Do you wanna keep going with the...
I don't want any damn problems.
Right. We don't want any damn problems.
If you wanna keep going with, working with him and let us know what we come up with insofar as...
Sounds good. Yeah, it'll be on, it'll be on a future, future agenda, perhaps the next one, whatever.
Perfect. Thanks, Justice.
Thank you.
Item number five, the approval of the regular minutes of the meeting, the regular meeting, February 3, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion of second. Are there any comments, questions, or corrections? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed by the same sign, motion carries. Item six through 23 is the consent agenda.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion of second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Steve, could we remove item 10 so I can abstain from that one? Thanks.
All right. You wanna amend your motion to cover everything other than item 10?
Are you looking...
That was my, I'm sorry, so moved.
My bad.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
So, I have a motion of second to approve the consent agenda with the removal of item number 10. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, motion carries. Now, I would take a separate motion on item number 10 with Alderman Jenkins abstaining.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion of second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, motion carries. Item number 24, permission to bid the Library Recreation Center improvements. And a presentation by Mike Gensh, Parks Recreation and Forestry Director. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, everyone. Megan, congratulations.
Thank you.
You bet. Tonight, we are requesting permission to bid the construction of the Library Recreation Center in the lower level of the library. This construction would consist of building two multipurpose rooms, one multipurpose room for different programs, one to be specifically for dance and a dance studio. It would also include new restrooms in the basement. It would include mechanical work in the basement, HVAC, fire suppression, et cetera. Also include a lobby area, so when families are waiting for their kids in recreation programs, they have a, a place to stay. Also, a long storage hallway. We're not gonna build storage rooms on it right now. We're looking at a long hallway with some cabinets and things like that. The estimated cost for this project is $362,000. Again, a lot of that is HVAC, the existing things need to move. We need to run a large vent all the way through the, from the basement through the roof of the library. So, many mechanical changes of the existing. Then obviously, we need to add HVAC, things like that, for the new construction. Funding for the project would come from the Library Reserve Fund, the Recreation Enterprise Fund, and donations. We can't say at this point in time, the Friends of Parks have donated $25,000 towards the project. We have also talked to other local groups and individuals in the West Bend area. And I believe very soon, we will have another announcement on a donation for this project. At this point in time, they asked us to not make that announcement, so, which is very good. There's some real strong momentum in the, in the community for this project. So, with that being said, also, we'd like to mention, the revenues that we would generate off, off of the recreation programs, things like that, would cover the increase in utility costs at the library. It would cover the general maintenance costs of, you know, cleaning of restrooms and all that. All the general maintenance, utilities, anything like that would be covered. We wouldn't be looking at the library, you know, covering additional utility costs or anything like that. Our recreation programs would be housed in there. The library would run programs in there. And if we don't have them that busy, we would rent those rooms out to other groups in the community, things like that. But I would assume we're not gonna have a lot of rental opportunities between talking to Amy over at the library and Nick, our recreation supervisor. They're pretty fired up for this, for this program. It's gonna work out good for many of our Park Rec programs. We have many different youth programs. We run at the Mutual Mall right now. We have over 200 young people in our dance program. The library, they're running out of room, and they need larger capacity rooms. Some of their programs right now, it's 12 people. They're gonna, they're starting to turn people away. So, these rooms will offer an opportunity for the library also to have larger classes, things like that. We would also like to mention that we are hoping, this is Phase One, and hopefully in the future, we will also have a Phase Two, which is completely separate from this, for again, some additional rooms, a little bit of storage, and all that in the lower level of the library. Some of the really nice things with this site and this project, the library's already there. It's a destination. We're not building a new standalone structure. We're using a facility the City of West Bend already owns. We're just adding to it and remodeling it. We have parking. We have electric. We have water. We have sewer. We have handicap accessibility. We have elevators. It gets very expensive when you have to put in elevators. So, for us, we're really excited to partner with the library and the library board, and we feel it's gonna be a real win-win for West Bend. So, with that being said, I would take any questions.
On that, that last note that you just hit, I'm hearing some crossover and maybe a little confusion between the library and parks. Are you anticipating any of that, Amy? Like with budget and whatnot, staffing, that sort of thing? Or is it mostly gonna be a positive, you think? Am I asking that question right?
I think so.
Okay.
We are going to have an MOU between the two departments, so that there will be no harm to the library.
Okay.
And we're working on that as, as we speak. So...
Okay, that's what I was concerned about, yeah.
Those, those types of conversations have already started.
Yeah.
And they will continue through the project.
Okay, good. It sounds like a great thing. Yeah, I don't think it's gonna be...
Yeah, it's a great marketing opportunity. It's a great space to be able to renovate and work with a community partner who's very close to us in the city.
Yeah.
And, and work out good for families that come in to use the library and to use recreation.
It's all quality life stuff. It's great. Yeah, thank you.
Question I have is the, the hours that you're gonna be using this for rec stuff versus the hours the library's in operation. Has all that been worked out? Is there accessibility through separate entrances and so on?
Well, right now, the library is open pretty extensive hours. We're open Monday through Thursday, 9 to 9, and then Friday, 9 to 6, and Saturday, 9 to 1. We're working on programming and, and hours with Parks and Rec to make sure that there is overlap within those hours.
As I may be a party to additional funding, as discussed, I will be abstaining again. Thank you.
Motion to approve bidding the work.
Second.
I have a motion of second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 25, approve acting mayoral appointment of Alderman Mark Allen to the Airport Commission. Mark got ahold of me a couple of weeks ago and said that he would be more than interested in filling the spot open on the Airport Commission with Rogers, not retired, but my brain died.
Departed.
Departed. That'll work. Thank you. Resignation. That's the word I was looking for. So, I haven't got it written down. Roger resignation. So, he expressed some interest in it, and I said I would have no problem with him doing that. He is under the understanding that it is only basically right now until the April 7 election, when one of these two gentlemen will be reviewing all the appointments to various commissions. And it'll be up to one of those two gentlemen to leave him there or move on. So, be looking for a motion for his approval.
Motion approved.
Approved.
Second.
I have a motion of second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, motion carries. Item number 26, termination and transfer of airport lease KR to Nova Marketing. Mark Petrovich, good evening.
Good evening. What you have before you is the two standard documents that we normally have when a private leaseholder at the airport wants to sell their private hangar. This one is on Lot 30. It's on the extreme east edge of the airport, a very nice hangar near where we had taken down that old single-family home a number of years ago. The documents you have in front of you, the lease agreement, or transfer agreement and the actual new lease are our standard approved forms, and also are consistent with the requirements of the FAA requirements at the airport. We would suggest or recommend approval of both documents in one motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion of second. Any questions or discussion for Mark? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Mark. Under reports, item 27, a report regarding the Joint Review Board. We met on February 4th with all of the interested parties in the taxing program. And basically, we moved to move forward on the new TIF district. And that will continue to move along, and hopefully we'll fill that up soon. Item 28, Alderman by, I mean, report by Alderman Jenkins or Caston regarding the planning commission meeting.
All right. I think it's my turn. The meeting went pretty smooth. We approved a conditional use permit for Strela Salon on Hickory Street. So, congrats to that business. The items in regards to QuickTrip was once again postponed until March. They did hold a public input session, I believe it was the day before, and they're still putting together information from that session. We approved a site plan to construct eight three-unit and one four-unit multifamily residential developments on South Main Street in my, in my district. So, I'm pretty excited to see some development there. That's been just vacant farmland for quite some time. And then finally, we set a public hearing to change from two-family residential to commercial for the property that is on 204 South 7th Avenue. That is the Kennel Marine Bible Church there. There was some discussion at the commission level in regards to how comfortable we were feeling with that primarily residential area, switching that property to commercial. But we do, did feel that it was worth hearing the public's input on that before any final decision was made. So, that public hearing was scheduled. Thank you.
Any questions for Chris?
Yeah. Was, was there any public comment on the changing the zoning of the, the church to commercial?
Not, not yet, because we're doing the public hearing.
Oh, okay.
Yep. But then I'll let you know.
Thanks, Chris. Item 29, report regarding the old, the Airport Commission meeting by Alderman Allen.
Oh, I wasn't, I wasn't actually planning to give a report. I was there.
Okay.
Primary business that was transacted was the lease that we just transferred and approved. And then there was a discussion about the, the apron work that's... And then there was a discussion about the, the apron work that's planned for matching funds with the FAA. It's a 95, 5% match, I believe. Is that correct, Mark?
Yes.
Yeah. And, and then there was talk about the repaving of Ariel Drive.
All right, any questions for Mark? Thanks, Mark. And last but not least, item 30, a report by Alderman Model regarding the Community TV Committee meeting.
Hello, yes, we had a community TV meeting on February 11th. The, the main points of interest, I guess, were the, John Elke, the producer, reported on the new Castis Build Out project, which is kind of gutting, gutting the room back there and putting all kind of new stuff in there. It's going to be awesome. It's a bit expensive, but it's going to look really good. And then we're kind of restructuring the community TV department. They're going to be renaming to Communications Department? Have we settled on that yet? Working on it, yeah, okay. But Jessica's doing a great job at rearranging everything, so it's going to be great.
Any questions for Justice? If not, being no further business for further common counsel, I adjourn. Are there any announcements?
I'd just like to thank the four candidates who applied for District 8. I think we had an embarrassment of riches, four well-qualified candidates, and I applaud all of their joining.
Totally agree.
Yeah.
Made the decision very hard. And don't forget tomorrow's the primary election, make sure you get out and vote. Good night, everybody.